My friend. President of Rocky Mountain Fairway is Lionel Latte. We're here this evening to present a proposal that we intend to submit to the DOT for our ATV access. Stretching from Boland Street to Pleasant Street for the sole purpose of giving Bradley residents or Bradley Village residents access to our trail system without having their trailer two minutes away. So unofficially, we've already spoke with the DOT while Rocky Mountain Fairway says, Missy has. And unofficially, they said they don't see this being a problem. So we decided to move forward with petitions and what we need is a blessing essentially from both municipalities to attach to our request form to give to Mr. Brian Bronson, the director of the ATV department or Department of Parks and Land. They're the only ones that can officially submit the request to DOT. So and they both require both the state and the DOT. One thing was asked, why essentially we're doing this? And the sole purpose is to give Bradley residents that that access to the trail system. It's not by any means to give people that live on Route 178 access to the trail system. That's not what we're trying to do with our heart is set on people using our trail system and beyond and beyond our trail system. So. I guess that's it. Would you like to add anything?
Yeah, I'd like to add that there has been alternate routes investigated over the past few years and none of those seem they all come with challenges, a lot of landowner issues, environmental issues, stream and all. And so this this by far is the easiest way. And we know that Bradley had you have you you've authorized your roads to be access roads and Milford has too. So this this is a good opportunity just to continue an access road connected to. And I guess Dave pretty much mentioned, mentioned everything else that I had in mind. I I want to thank you for putting us on your side.
Yes.
Yeah. Thank you. And we officially, if you would have to act on that this evening and hopefully a favorable vote.
Yes, the only other plausible idea that we had was also extremely costly. It would have been over a hundred thousand dollars.
The the other alternative.
What was the other alternative? Just curious. To build a bridge over Great Works Stream over by Kidridge property. But there there was other challenges other than the expenses too. But maybe in the future, we can work on those and and get that rolling too. But this is the best, cheapest, fastest way to get Bradley Bradley residents using our trail system.
Yes, I'd like to add it's it's safe as well. I mean, there's DOT has looked at it. We've looked at the criteria. Dave Dave's done all the legwork on this, but we shoulder, you know, shoulders are at a good width width and.
And it's under forty five mile per hour.
Under the, under the speed limit. And I suppose the the traffic volume, there's a number of criteria that DOT will look at if we get favorable votes from Bradley and Milford. And I probably, I want to add that we've got a lot of town support. I assume that a number of folks here tonight are Bradley residents.
We do have a bunch of we do have a bunch of named on petitions.
To show local support.
Right. So.
You mentioned the speed limit. What is the speed limit for an ATV on highway?
Well, we can only do fifteen miles per hour in town. So we would have to use the shoulder going the same direction as traffic on that section of road.
At fifteen, I think.
At fifteen.
Yeah, some, some of the less busy local streets, they've allowed us to go to Potters County. You know, further out on County Road, it allows us to go to twenty five.
Right.
But I I don't know if it's ultimately up to the council to decide on that, but we'll, we'll, we'll request fifteen.
In town.
In that.
It's it's close enough to me in town, DOT would want that. I think that's we are now fifteen for our side roads.
Yes.
Yeah, so that, you know, that makes sense locally. I mean, where there's residents and we're fine with that.
Since, since neither Bradley or Milford have town and law enforcement. I I don't, the Brad, Milford doesn't have law.
Milford does contract with the Potters County shares.
Yeah, like we do.
They have a full time contract.
Oh, they do?
Yeah.
Okay. We don't have a full time though. We have a couple of days a week. Who would, who would police this thing?
Uh, well, I'm, I'm not sure if anyone directly would be. It would be maybe complaints calls and that would probably be the warden service.
Right, ward, warden's and sheriff's would have the authority. Yeah, would, wouldn't be us.
Yeah. By the county.
We've got a whole authority. You know, we, what we do is we, we're very active on our Facebook and we would keep information out there. If there was a complaint or something like that. And what we encourage all of our members to do is if you see somebody doing something stupid and there are people that do that up there is, you know, try to get a registration number. I mean, we, the good guys like to keep, keep watch of, you know, those that don't behave the way they should. So that's about what we can offer.
I'm actually in hopes that this access will cut down some of the trespassing and damage to property also that would benefit.
We're seeking a legal, I I didn't want to throw that word out there, a legal connection versus on the means that might be done now.
And the stretch of road that you're talking about is that I, we have a little map here that was provided to us. Is it what, the one point one miles? Is that, that that sounds about right, you know?
I would like to propose that we endorse this petition to submit to the state DOT, knowing full well that they will have to apply by all of the state regulatory issues that are out there. And I think it would be a nice thing for Bradley to do to endorse it. How do you second that?
Thank you. Motion is eight seconded to endorse the application, I guess it is, right? You said you have to. Yeah, it's a request. It's a request form, yeah.
Support from the, from the town at this point. So that, so that, yeah, so that the, the officials in town, the councils.
Missy, you would draw up a letter of acceptance, right?
Yeah, I think what I would do if the town council moved forward a motion to approve, then I would just write a letter on behalf of the Bradley Town Council, noting that we had a public hearing and public attendance and that the motion was made by the council.
And we're in hopes that Milford could do something similar, yeah.
Yeah, Milford, Milford has not acted on it yet.
No, that meeting is November twenty first.
Just a scheduling.
And I'm gonna sweat a little bit more.
We anticipate their support, we anticipate their support as well because they they have supported us on a number of initiatives in the past, so. And they do have a few roads, you know, with the restrictions stay off of Route two, in that case, just because Route two is a different, a different animal.
Yeah.
Yes, you know. But their local streets are open up.
Yeah. Yeah.
It'll probably be helpful that we endorse it before you go to Milford.
I, I think so.
It would seem, yes.
I mean, the, the real advantage Dave touched on in Bradley, we don't need to belabor the point here, but the residents, the ATV enthusiast in your, in town of Bradley will be able to connect through the, you know, you can get that, I don't know if you're, if you're all ATV, ATV ears or not, but Lincoln, you know, you can get anywhere, basically it allows Bradley to get anywhere from, from here.
Yeah, I know that when we enacted, you know, the, the local streets a few years back, you maybe had, you know, a couple of people complaining, you know, upfront, but I don't think we've really.
I don't get any complaints anymore.
Nobody goes by my house.
Yeah. I'm surprised.
I know, I'm too.
No, we haven't. At the onset of the approval, we did have complaints, but I don't receive any complaints in any way.
You talked about alternative routes. Has anything been done to study traveling up the power line?
That, that is a dead end. We, we tried a couple of different times and it just, the, the landowners are not willing to participate. So. Some are, but most aren't. So we tried to do the bridge thing. Like I said, that's not out of the realm of possibility, but other things have to happen before we can do that.
Isn't the club's intention to put out the signage that's involved? I know that.
On the, on, on one seventy eight?
Yeah.
Uh, they, it has to be ordered through the DOT, only they provide those. I don't know what the cost is, but it's gonna be minimal.
We, we pay for it.
Yeah, the club, the club, the club does all of it.
Yeah, I know when they did it here in town, we had to have the signs put up.
Yeah.
Yeah, I believe.
There's a frequency every often, but anyways, yeah.
Didn't know Dan Davis say that he did.
Dan Davis, yeah, did that, but.
The, the club paid for those signs in the, in installing them because we opened up the access.
The standards reflectarized, the metal on the steel posts.
Yeah, they'll have to go every so often. That'll be up to the DOT too.
And they'll have the speed limit on it as well. I don't always say access road. We probably have those up now, don't you? And, yeah, and end of access.
They're gonna look a little different though, the DOT.
And this is only from point A to point B. It's not a, it's not building a playground for ATVs.
No, it is the sole purpose of getting Bradley residents, Bradley Village residents specifically to our trail system without having a trailer and go to the County Market or whatever. So with, with the I was actually surprised that there wasn't already in existence when I moved here, you know. It's, we're so close to Milford. It just boggles my mind.
Yeah, it's just the main road, the side road.
Yeah. Right, but. And there'd be no crossing. I mean, you go and down, right? There's no crossing. Everybody's. No, the only time you would cross is to, yep, right.
One degree.
Yeah, that's a plus.
Right. And I did think about how much traffic it would need and the, the, the probability of two wheelers passing each other by on that stretch of road is minimal, real minimal, I would think.
Well, they each have to travel on the right hand side, right?
Correct.
Well, they have to try, they have to travel on their respective sides. So if the, if traffic is going this way, then the ATVs have to be on match over.
Right.
And vice versa.
Right.
It's probably decided two wheelers and two cars all with the same, all four trying.
Yeah, yeah. That probably will happen, but it's gonna be very minimal, I would think.
A lot of that showed as ATV.
Yeah. Yeah, it would happen between eight AM and ten AM and then from say like seven PM to nine AM. Would be the most.
When there would be the most traffic, you mean?
That would, that would be the most probability of that happening, yeah. But there'd be no restricted hours, right? You're not gonna know, it was just curfew, right? Do we have a curfew? No, I think the state requires a, has to be quiet.
They might put a restriction on it. We don't know.
Yeah, I just want to clarify one thing. It's not just the village too, because like Ten Road, you know, all of all like Point Street, Ten Road, Boland Street, everybody can come.
Right, that's, I consider that traffic. All, all that's connected to our access roads.
Um, the other thing, oh, noise perhaps is fifty miles an hour. You know, you don't make a lot of noise at fifty.
You really don't. Tyler Jackson's truck gets a lot of noise.
And it's flat. So you're not, you don't, you're not running under a lot of power.
I'm not sure I would try to build a case that they maintain fifteen. I live out on Ten Road and I can tell you there's a lot of them that go by me that aren't fifteen.
Yeah.
A lot of them.
Yeah, it's.
I don't complain. Like, Missy spoke, but I mean, she hasn't had any complaints. Nobody complains. It, it's not about being a problem. It's about worrying that kids are gonna get killed.
It's the safety, yeah. Yeah, that's the, that's the purpose of the fifty mile an hour.
And, and down on Baker Lane, Ten Road, it's become not just four wheelers and ATVs. It's now electric bicycles and it's electric motor scooters and it's a, uh, trail bikes and you know, ninety cc trail bikes and all of that kind of thing is all going up and down that road. And it's kids. You can tell when school lets out.
Yeah.
When school gets out, the traffic in motorcycles and trail bikes and all of that stuff all increases. The kids are out and we've built a playground for them. So the fifteen mile per hour thing, I don't know if I have a lot of faith in that.
No, 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 I'd like to think that we do.
It's not bothering me. I mean, I live far enough off the road. Noise don't bother me, dust don't bother me, but I'm scared to death one of them kids is gonna get killed.
The helmet issue though.
It's a helmet issue.
Yeah, the helmet issue with these kids too.
Yes.
I'm right on the ten road. I see a long time.
Right. Right, I, I, Eric, you live on ten road. I mean, how many, how many do you see going fifteen miles an hour?
None.
It don't happen. It don't happen. It's probably thirty five or forty. So the fifteen miles per hour is a, is a fox. It's, it don't, it's not happening.
Yeah, it's, it's extremely hard to do.
I would actually say that part of it is you hear the sound of the four wheeler or side by side and you think it's going faster, but a lot of times it's not.
No.
They go by my house all the time and then I, I can see the actual speed they're going at.
I see a lot of traffic.
Louder.
I see a lot of traffic go by my house. I can judge fifteen miles an hour.
Just saying.
And I will say too, Main Road, Route one seventy eight will have a lot more law enforcement presence than obviously Ten Road and Great Lakes, but that will help with.
Well, on the sidewalk, you got a sidewalk on one seventy eight on one side, right? And there's a sidewalk.
There is a sidewalk, but the ATVs would be written on the sidewalk.
You're not proposing that they travel the sidewalk, are you?
No.
No.
I was saying that for the kids.
More cautious because of the sidewalk.
Kids won't be playing as much open street.
Yeah, right. Obviously, one seventy eight, think about it, right, in the summertime, it's kind of yard sales, you know, all along that, that road. So the ATVs are probably gonna have to go into the roadway, right? You gotta run a lot of those parked cars at times. Sundays when churches, you know, churches in session for a couple of churches, they're probably gonna have to go into the roadway at times, which I mean, I guess it's just, you know, concern for the, anybody out there riding or anybody driving on the street as well, but there isn't a church on that stretch of road, is there?
No.
No, further down, yeah, right, yeah.
Who managed the map that we're looking at, Missy?
I did.
There's a notation on there that it takes twenty four minutes, I guess, to go the whole distance.
That was just Google. I didn't do any of that. I had nothing to do with that.
Twenty four minutes to walk it?
To walk it.
Oh, to walk it, okay.
That's, that's a flagrant.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
Well, the, the, the motion's been made and seconded to approve, I guess, to, to put support for the proposal. Any other questions or, or comments this evening on that?
Yeah, I, I, I guess I would like to ask just one more. Who has been interacting with the DOT?
I, I called the DOT myself. That, that's really what sparked this idea is I just simply asked Brian Bronson, how come we just can't, you know, act, get access for on one seventy eight? And I called the DOT and the DOT said that they had specifically had to get the form from Brian Bronson and Brian Bronson emailed me the packet and then Missy and I and Lionel had been working on it since.
And I had a conversation with DOT Traffic Engineer.
Have, have they given any indication that they're gonna be supportive of it?
They're unofficial, yes.
Okay.
Yeah. And I met with the traffic engineer.
They had no, really no concerns. We got.
It's just become a big, you know, we've come so long in ATV from, you know, even when the room was filled to have people have our room, rows open for access. You travel across the street, state, and there's many rows open for ATV access. I mean, Greenville, you go right down Room fifteen with traffic.
This place is Dover too.
Dover. Everywhere, it's just really opening up access, so. It's really not as big a deal as it probably once was when I.
I'd agree with that.
Yeah.
Any other questions, comments? If not, we'll vote on the motion that's in hand to again support the proposal. Dwayne?
Hi.
Larry?
Hi.
Charlie?
Hi.
Mark said I.
Very good.
Thank you very much.
Very much.
I would like to add one comment from Ryan Wilcox. Back when, while back, we looked, looked, trying to get a bridge across Great Works Stream. And we tried to contact Cameron Pritchell.
That's correct.
Did anything ever come around?
I, I called her and I wrote her a letter and I have not received any communication from her.
Right, because when, when we met that day with the state people, who's a group there, uh, one of the advantages of getting a permanent right of way through there was this, they thought that the state may be able to take in money to fix that road and fix the boat landing. So it may be worthwhile for the council to look into eminent domain. That, that little piece of land is of no value to her. You know, just a little triangular piece, but it may, maybe some return of the town fix the road and possibly a bridge if there was needed and fix the boat landing.
So we, we've tried to get that boat landing fixed up before, but whoever it was, was it, it wasn't the DOT?
That was Department of Conservation and they would not put any money in because of the private ownership on that small.
The same, the same problem.
I think that's something the council could look at in the future, taking that little piece of land would benefit everybody.
And we as a club would stand behind that too, but still, that, that's the other idea that we had. He's talking about the same thing. Ryan Wilcox was actually the one that came up with this idea originally and I've been working with him, trying to get this moving forward as well. So until Bradley, uh, the town Bradley has that easement, uh, the state wouldn't be able to get involved in it, so.
Right, that's what they told us.
Yeah, but if we do get easement from that, Ryan Wilcox is exactly right. You could do so much more with it.
Well, it'd be multi-use too.
Right, multi-use, you know, you could get your, your boat launch, your dock, you know. They would, they would be more open to discussion if we had access to the road. But because it, you know, they're not guaranteed that it would exist forever, that's why I don't want to be involved. And if that was to ever happen, then we could pursue the bridge again. Well, thank you for, you're all welcome to stay.
Yeah. I'm sorry.
But thank you.
Thank you very much, guys.
Appreciate it. But the next thing on our agenda is to review the last meeting, so I'll make a motion. Any questions, corrections, concerns for the meeting from the last minute, uh, for the last meeting? If not, we'll vote on those minutes. Dwayne? Larry?
Hi.
Charlie?
Hi.
Mark said I. Citizens' request? No, blast. Manager's request, yeah.
Um, I just wanted to let the town council know that our assessing agent, Mark Gibson, will be coming to our November seventh meeting to talk to the town council about reevaluation options for our next tax commitment. The municipal review committee board of directors election ballot is ready and I would like to have town council make a motion to vote for me.
So moved. Motion been made and seconded to vote for Missy for, what's the position again?
Uh, it's the executive director position for a three year municipal review committee.
Okay. We'll vote, Dwayne?
Great pleasure.
Larry?
Hi.
Charlie?
Hi.
Mark, good luck. Thank you.
Um, in your boxes, you saw a draft updated foreclosure policy. So what I did is I updated our current foreclosure policy to capture a new law. I wrote in a memo that recently the Supreme Court made a ruling that it was unconstitutional for govern, governments to retain any access process from tax acquired sales. So the Maine legislators made a new law that actually comes into effect tomorrow. And so this foreclosure policy addresses that new law. What it basically does is it gives the former taxpayer who refused to pay taxes for three years, a little bitter about this law. The, in ninety days additional time to pay the taxes, all the taxes in full or request, demand actually, that the town hire a real estate broker to list the property for sale at a high market price or a sale that can be obtained within six months. And so after the sale, um, or the six months, the excess funds can then be returned to the prior owner who again refused to pay real estate taxes for three years. Minus all the outstanding taxes accrued interest, taxes that would have been assessed on the property that had not been foreclosed on, property listing and broker fees, legal fees and at a ten percent administrative fee. So that's basically what the law states and now that's addressed in our foreclosure policy.
So, yes, so I, I understand. So we, we foreclose and the tax lien is ten thousand dollars. The property owner, who actually isn't the owner anymore, right? Because we.
It's automatically vested to the town of Bradley for unpaid taxes.
Okay.
But so that's why they're the prior.
Prior owner can say, I want to hire, or I, the Mia, you hire a real estate agent to list it for forty thousand dollars.
The real estate agent decides.
Right, right.
Yeah, yeah.
So the real estate agent said the property is worth forty grand.
Yeah.
Or the property, you know, the piece of land. So if we sell it for forty thousand or they sell it for forty thousand dollars within six months, then the ten thousand that they owe minus, like you said, the, the, the fees and the, and the ten percent admin gets removed from that. So say that totals fifteen thousand dollars. We would have to pay that prior owner, the, the remaining twenty five thousand dollars.
That's correct.
Interesting.
Absolutely correct.
And if they determine value at, if it was forty thousand, we're required to sell it for forty thousand or more?
Within a six, we have six months to get that value.
Or they have six months.
We, we couldn't, we couldn't sell it for the ten thousand dollar tax that's owed.
Nope. Nope, you have to give, if they demand that a real estate broker lease the, sell the property and whatever that real estate broker says is the market value or sale that can happen in six months, that's what has to be listed as for sale.
What if it doesn't sell in six months?
If it doesn't sell in six months, then it goes back to the old fashioned way where we're able to do what we want to. Most likely, we are not gonna get a taxpayer who requests this. Our tax foreclosures have been mostly mortgages that have defaulted and.
People's touch.
Yeah, well, actually, this case that was decided in Minnesota by the Supreme Court was of a lady who passed away. The, the backstory on that is she had a condo, I believe, in Minnesota and never paid her taxes, passed away. The family went to go sell the condo and realized they didn't own it. So then that's when this whole came, came up. So in my experience, I can't get the, the prior, prior landowner to communicate with me.
Right.
Right? So there's a property actually for sale, uh, for, in, on Main Street in Bradley, at the, at the Bradley Milford line that is still assessed to the prior owner. It's going through foreclosure. I know that by looking at tax, you know, probably, uh, registry deeds information. I have to by law send him a certified mail in saying, if you don't pay your taxes, we're gonna have a lien. And then in thirty days, I have to by law send him another notification, you didn't pay your taxes, so now you have a lien. Every time he gets a notification from me, he calls me mad as heck. I don't want any more notices from you. I don't own that property. I gave it up. He will be a perfect example of how this might not work out well, right? Because if nobody pays, is, is, or it's mortgage company isn't paying, they haven't paid yet. He now will get this letter from me. He probably won't open it, but he may. And he will have an opportunity to get the proceeds for whatever the sale of that house become with minus. It's really not fair. It's not fair to the other two thousand people in town or properties that pay taxes, right? Because they can just sit on it and they don't want to, they can just, now we're a real estate company.
It's waiting for us to hire a realtor for them.
Right. And, and deal with all of it.
And then it sends the process, right? I mean, it's six months. We have to wait another six months.
Absolutely.
How much time do we give the prior, prior owner, because the town owns the property at that point? How much time do we give the prior owner to make that decision?
Ninety days.
Ninety days, so now they're ninety days plus six months.
Yeah. Ninety days unless they don't return that demand.
Right.
And then if they don't return the demand, we can go back to the old process and what you determine is the best situation for that property.
So it's tied up for a minimum nine months.
Yeah, additional nine months after they haven't paid their taxes for three years.
Already gone through the foreclosure.
Yeah, exactly.
So.
So.
So, Missy, you might have already addressed this, but I think you said, I think you said, they have to request that it go through a broker.
Yes, so it, it should have been attached to that foreclosure property, a letter, a, yes.
And, and, and if they don't request it, then we can sell it for what's due for tax?
We can sell it exactly how we have it before. Um, this, this form, this notice of intent to sell tax acquired property is from the state of Maine Department of Revenue Service. And this, uh, demand is also from Department of Revenue. And this, um, demand is also from Department of Revenue Services. So they would have to get that and then return it to us for us to have to go through that ninety-day window. If they don't within the ninety days, then we can proceed as we have.
How long do they have to require us to hire a broker and do that?
Ninety days.
Ninety days, because I didn't see that anywhere.
Yeah.
Ninety days from?
The date of automatic, or the date.
Of foreclosure?
Date of foreclosure, I believe.
Okay.
Welcome to the Supreme Court.
Yeah, it's crazy. I remember this came to the executive committee of Maine Municipal Association and they were gonna, they, um, did a I remember something brief, we had a friend of the court, Amicus brief, and, 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 you know, we were, I was just like, I can't get these former owners to respond half the time, like, for your property that you got, the Mitchell property. That was left abandoned for five years.
At least.
And they paid the property taxes on it for two or three years, and then they just stopped paying. And then they waived foreclosure, then it went bad. It's just a disaster. And I'm like, that's a majority of tax foreclosures. Somebody during the public hearing could this, because I sent in, uh, testimony for this, because all of our foreclosures, for instance, Larry's took the Mitchell one, we offered it to the abutters, and now it's a nice, clean property. Um, the one on Pine Street was falling down. I had homeless people living in there at one point that I had to have the sheriff come and evacuate, um. You know, complaints of racks and all of this. It's torn down now to two apartments, you know, so, like, that's the process that most municipalities go through. At the public hearing, a legislator said that coastal communities aren't doing that, that they're taking those properties that are worth so much and selling them for millions of dollars and reaping the benefits. But if that person had paid their taxes, there wouldn't have been any issue. So this, um, policy is in just draft form. I'm just gonna ask you to review it, um, and then we can discuss it at the next meeting, and then we'll send it on to, uh, our adjournments.
One, one other question, just like you said, you kind of the policies that we have in place now where we do offer a foreclosed property to a butter, is that again, would just be, this would have to be all worked out, all closed out before our regular policy would go into place?
Yeah.
So if it gets posted with a real estate agent, we couldn't say, okay, you as an abutter have first choice. It just, we just go through the regular.
That's right.
Okay.
We don't have any in process now, do we?
We don't have any in process now. We will have some foreclosures in January. I don't think that they'll ultimately be foreclosed on. They're repeaters. I can usually tell that they're gonna pay.
Anyway, I mean, we don't have any way to.
No.
To say, hey, we're not gonna.
I mean, we can, but we could be challenged.
Okay.
Okay, so there's that, um. The, uh, you might remember a couple months ago, I reported that I had applied to Maine Municipal Association for a grant for security cameras. Uh, Ruby did receive that funding. So the grant will cover a hundred percent of the cost up to, but not exceeding three thousand dollars. So I asked for an updated, um, cost from our vendor who does our security, now central security, and he provided me with an updated cost, which I outlined for you, but for the public record, municipal building at forty-seven-ten, post office nine-seventy-one, fire station three-thousand-four-fifty-seven, salt shed five-ninety-three. As you can see from the proposal, the, this, this, the, uh, recording devices would be here, located here at the municipal offices, and they would bridge to each of those buildings. And so that cost with all of the buildings is nine-thousand-seven-thirty-one. We have grant funding of three thousand, and we had budgeted two thousand dollars for this project, um, years ago, and I've been carrying it forward. So that five thousand leaves a funded need of four-thousand-seven-thirty-one. And so we have a couple options. We could obviously just, uh, install the system at the municipal building and then try to budget for further installs in the future. However, my recommendation is to use four-thousand-seven-thirty-one from the municipal capital reserves budget line item, which was twenty-one thousand, which was be, be deposited in January, making our capital reserve deposit for municipal expenditures for twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four, sixteen thousand two sixty-nine. Thoughts?
So it's, it's a one-time cost? There's no, like, subscription to the service?
No.
Going forward?
Because it's record, it's like recorded, it's not a.
Yeah, I see where it says that you get thirty days, record for approximately thirty days for local or remote viewing, um. One-year parts and labor warranty. Any idea or, or information from the, from the company of how, like, how long the system, like, the, how long we, we would expect to last?
I did not ask that. I would assume upwards of fifteen years. That's typical for investment of that size.
I got the same stock in my office. I haven't issued yet. It's been twenty years.
Go on.
Do we need post office buy-in for that part over there?
So it's not gonna be there. It's going to be pointed.
Oh, I see.
Yeah.
I see.
Yeah.
Because they probably have their own.
They do not have their own. That was an issue that I brought with them for two years on, and they do not, because they're supposed to. But they're leased, but I can't get anybody to.
I would make a motion that we, uh, go by Missy's recommendation and take the four-thousand-seven-thirty-one from the municipal capital reserve and do this as a one-time expenditure. I'll second that motion. The motion has been made and seconded to move forward with using the forty-seven-thirty-one funding needed from the town on top of the, um, grant monies of three thousand dollars to build all the security system for the municipal building, the post office, the fire station, and the salt shed combined. Any other questions or comments on the motion? If not, we'll vote. Dwayne?
Hi.
Larry?
Hi.
Charlie?
Hi.
Mark Sinan?
Thank you.
I guess I should probably ask one other question. When, when can they do it?
Um, he wants to do it as soon as possible, so I probably will call in tomorrow. I will call in tomorrow, and I bet he'll start within the next week or so. He mentioned something about snow flying. Um, so I just wanted to remind town council and the public that the town of Bradley does have an ordinance to restrict winter parking. I know it's gonna be seventy degrees this weekend, but, um, it's typically, it's typically supposed to snow in November. Um, and that no person shall allow or permit any vehicle under his or her control or registered in his or her name to stand or be parked upon a public way within the limits of town of Bradley um, to interfere with, or removal of snow. And the road commissioner or the town manager can have those vehicles that are parked towed away at the owner's expense. Just a reminder. We used to do a yearly thing, but we have a fight ordinance now.
Have we ever had to tow anybody?
Yes.
We?
They love that. Um, and then lastly, I presented to you a draft, uh, personnel policy that I did specifically for the volunteer firefighters. Um, as you know, we've been doing all these policies and trainings and all that stuff, so I have to, before the end of the year, go and meet with the volunteer fire department and go over all of these trainings with them. I'm gonna buy them pizza, so they'll listen to me. But, um, I, as I was getting ready to do something for them, I was kind of looking at our personnel policy, and it doesn't really fit into that mold of volunteerism. And there's just, I just wanted to create a policy that we can make sure that they know that they're protected. For instance, that they know that they have workers' comp insurance, they know that they're eligible for Medicare, um, for any of their benefits that they work, obviously, the discriminations and the whistleblowers and all of the things that protect an employee. I just wanted to make sure that the firefighters knew that we were dedicated to making sure that they were protected. One thing that we, I put in their policy is we, um, the town of Bradley each year pays for volunteer firefighter insurance. It's about eight hundred dollars a year, and we have been doing that for before, I think since I came on, and knock on the plastic, we've never had to use it, but it just gives a firefighter additional protection above and beyond workers' comp if they get hurt when they're volunteering firefighter suppression, because there's an, there's a chance that a firefighter could get hurt and not be able to go to work. And that's gonna be a different workers' comp benefit than if they got hurt while working a full-time job. So that benefit, just make sure that they're protected, um, if they're hurt while suppressing fire for a class and a volunteer basis. So I gave it to Eric, and he's gonna work it over with his officers, I'm assuming, and get that to me. And then I'll come to council if you guys have any other things you want to add to it or.
Would that include, just real quick, um, not just when they're out on a call for fire, but the training as well?
For training, yeah. Not when they are participating in a parade or a muster or anything like that. But trainings are considered working, working, volunteering.
Eric gets hurt during the softball game.
Eric get hurt on softball games, not a lot. Unless he's got athletes. Um, so that's all I have for my managers' report.
Any questions, comments, follow-up on the man- interview report for this evening? If not, we'll jump down to new business? Like, there's a, a motion, um, required for the municipal election warrant, Missy?
Yeah, so our municipal election is November seventh. Um, obviously, there's a statewide election with many, uh, referendum questions, but the town of Bradley is also having an election to elect one RSU school board. And so that mode, that warrant calls that election.
Do we have, do we have a business for new papers?
Uh, Howard Jack, turning papers, so he's the only person, so he's the only one on the ballot, but we could have a write-in.
Writing, yeah.
So, Missy, you need a motion or a signature?
Yes, a motion and a signature, please.
So moved. Second. Any, uh, questions, comments on that motion? Not a vote. Dwayne?
Hi.
Larry?
Hi.
Charlie?
Hi.
Mark Sinan? And you need a signature on?
Yes, yeah, the lines versus municipal officers.
Okay. You have a new business, Missy?
Um, I do not have any.
Any new business from the council?
One thing I guess I would just bring up, Missy, you sent a letter to Robert, we here, um, with respect to moving forward on taking the property. I don't know if that's the right term.
Condemning, yeah.
Condemning.
Yeah.
Do we need any motions alternated, move?
No.
Okay.
He has not signed for that letter.
Well, the new law, though, foreclosure thing, what's going on with this?
It will. Yeah. But keep being respected. But yes, but if that property was to be foreclosed on, it would go through the same process. The prior policy kind of protected us, because it stated any building that was uh, non-conforming to state local ordinances and statutes would not be considered for that policy. So that gave the town council authority to do something with it instantly. Now that property was still, that, if left unpaid, would be subject to that ninety-day in a real estate thing.
So, I'm just trying to see the, the, uh, process here. If, um, if we demolish it, that, it would just be the value of the land?
Yes.
Essentially, right?
Yes. Yeah.
But the rest of it would play as described earlier?
That's right.
Let's see, I guess I did just one last question, like, I haven't had anything. These folks mentioned the eminent domain process for that junk of land down there. Do we know anything about eminent domain?
I mean, I've read about it.
Yeah, it's gotta be for public purpose, right?
Yeah, I mean, this might be a plausible cause, um. I will state, I had a conversation with our common contractor, and since it's come to my light that we don't own that, we probably shouldn't be following it. So there won't be any problem taking place on that road this winter. Usually, we go down and turn around, because we, I always thought it was our, well, road. And now that I know that that's not our road, we should not be following a private road, so we will be going around the corner and not following that road.
That piece that we don't own is out into the roadway?
Yes.
Well.
Yeah.
All the way down to the water?
No. It's a very small section, um. I'll show you the map that I. This is, uh, this is a map of, I'll try and gather here. I'm sorry, you're going out Kram Street. And this is Baker Lane. And this is where Back Mills Road is. This is the section right there that we don't own.
Just a little bit.
Yeah. This is town of Bradley, and this is Department of Conservation, and this is the boat landing there.
So not only can we not follow that road, we can't maintain it either.
That's correct, and that's why when I first came on as a manager, we had a problem down there with kids going down and you know, having fires and, which I guess is allowable down there, but they were leaving trash and whatever, and, um, Chuck Simpson was the, uh, the land manager at the time, and he was very hesitant to put state money into that road, because they weren't unsure of the ownership. Um, and it was never a town concern really, so I didn't really look into it. But now that we know that, we, we probably should not be taking our truck on private roads, so.
So that little, little yellow block that was on that, that map, just a triangle piece is the piece that we don't own, or is it the yellow, the entire yellow block?
That entire yellow block.
The entire yellow block, okay.
But we would just require ownership of the road.
Right. Yeah, we don't care about left and right.
Yeah, right.
Have you been in contact with the owner?
I have, yeah.
When you, when you say ownership of the road, would that be a twenty-eight-foot wide strip going through or?
I, I haven't looked into that, no. Originally, I just wanted to have a, a, a conservation easement type thing, that that would be part of a deed and, um, it would be granted, but, um, no, I have not heard from them.
They seem to have been non-responsive.
That's correct.
In the case of a deed non-responsive, what's the procedure for going to eminent domain?
I don't know. I would need authorization from the town council to look forward with that.
Well, Missy, this is nowhere near where they talked about putting that bridge down there across the stream, huh?
That's right, but they can't get there without that.
I didn't realize that.
Yeah.
So what's your thought with respect to looking into taking it?
I would like to see how the winter goes.
Yeah.
Without having it be blocked.
Is the owner here?
No, no, they use it as a camp. And I don't know how frequently they're there. I've never seen them there, and I've only met them once, um, since I've been here.
And there's no avenue to go around that piece?
Not really.
Okay.
It would require another landowner.
Right, same thing.
Yeah, giving an easement.
So we can't even maintain the boat landing? That's a great recreational opportunity down there.
It really is, and even the bridge that they're talking about, like, I know ATV, but snowmobiling, um, hunting, fishing, walking, horse, I mean, I, I, you know, I'm an ATVer, um, the treasure of that club, but, um, I see horses on trails and people walking and, um, we.
It's a great way to get up.
Yeah, uh, big tire bikes and, I mean, it's really, it's really neat.
Yeah.
And, um, yeah, it's a, there's a huge opportunity.
Getting across that stream opens up a lot of area.
Yeah, and all of that green is that area.
Yeah.
Owned by the Department of Conservation. That people really technically can't get to right now, really, because the road, the Kingsbury Road, which goes to that land, does not allow a portion of it does not allow ATVs, because there's a small little portion that's maintained by Prines and Carlisle, and they will not allow ATV access. A portion of it does not allow ATVs, because there's a small portion that's maintained by apprentice and carla, and they will not allow ATV access. So really, all of that public land. Is. Just waiting there for people to be able to use.
That's nuts.
Any other new business? Council?
Oh, I did have one, I wanted to just kind of remind you, um. So. The election is November seventh, and April is going to be doing the election all by herself, she's been doing all of the election duties for this election all by herself, she's doing a great job. And as we've kind of talked to her in the past, she has a desire to be the official town clerk. So if this election goes well, I think it's very reasonable that she be appointed the the town clerk, and I would become the deputy town clerk.
Demotion.
Demotion. Greatly appreciated.
That's great.
Yeah, I, she's really enjoying it, she's doing a great job and, yeah.
Uh, we jumped on unfinished business, any unfinished business from you, Missy?
No.
Unfinished business from the council? I'm just gonna ask, um, are town signs, are those gonna be completed?
I don't know, I haven't heard from him, that happened, and I'm not gonna bug him because he's doing it for free.
Yeah.
But I'll talk to him again in the spring, if we don't get a, yeah.
Any news on the one seventy eight closing for the railroad tracks?
I have not heard anything, have you?
Okay.
And we literally never got a notification, because it's not.
They did, they did the mall road and the county road?
They did the county road, I don't know if they did the car road, I only go to county road.
They do, yeah.
It's less than, yeah, city wall roads.
Yeah. Green, yeah, I know they did the county road, obviously.
So, I I was kind of expecting it Sunday.
Well, I think we were. Hammered with rain on Sunday, so I'm sure that that's part of the process, but. We never, like I was saying, we never actually got official notification, it came, we saw, I think you sent it to me, and Eric said you called, you called the.
Called multiple fire chief, and a discussion of all town, to the emergency service, for Bradley and for fire. Case we need.
But we never, I think it's probably because it's not Bradley, but it's the access of course, but we never, never received any of them.
I never, I do have. A number now for the railroad that takes care of all of us. You have.
Yeah, they both didn't, they're gonna close it, but a nurse has never happened, Sunday we were, three same days, so it's not closed, Monday will enclose.
Yeah.
I would imagine, I don't know this, but I would imagine they have other schedules to meet for other processes. And they'll get back to this one later.
Okay.
I would imagine.
Any other unfinished business? If not, I'll make the motion to accept the municipal warrants as they were presented this evening.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, any questions on the warrants? Not a vote, Dwayne?
Hi.
Charlie?
Hi.
Larry?
Hi.
Markson, I? Next meeting is set for November seventh. That also Tuesday?
Yes, it's actually the election.
What's it again?
Yeah, it's actually the election.
Yeah, so I was gonna say, we've really offset it, but we're gonna have the meeting. Okay. You cannot make the November seventh date, please let the other councillors and the town office know. Anything from Facebook?
I, there was nothing earlier. And I, gosh, this was kind of cool, I looked, and it shows like a red thing on our live. Oh, there's no. No, there's no comments.
I will make a motion to adjourn then for this evening.
Second.
Second. Put everybody in?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.